Okay, we will call to order the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Aquino?
Here.
Chalam Charla?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
And Howell?
Here. And now if you guys will all join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic.
Republic. Which stands one nation, one country.
Invisible.
With liberty.
Just as far off. Okay, and that moves us on to agenda update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Stephen, one city attorney. There are updates to the only item on this afternoon's agenda. A copy of the update has been distributed and uploaded onto the city's website through the city clerk's office. And that's the only item on tonight's agenda. What is afternoon's agenda?
So it's not actually an agenda update. It's additional information commentary provided by the public that has been loaded so that there's folks that want to read that. And unfortunately, some of that information came as late as a minute ago.
Yes, ma'am.
So that makes it a little bit difficult for us and anybody else who's watching this meeting to absorb that information when it comes in at the time we're actually meeting. Having said that, I understand that the, before we get to our first item, that the city manager has some comments she'd like to make.
Yes, if I could, Mayor, before we get started, I wanted to respond to some public comments that were received by the council that is your city manager at different times as you were working on the draft map. During your February eighth city council meeting, I read aloud and or summarized aloud comments that were received as texts on my phone during the meeting and that there were not names attached to those comments at the time. First of all, thank you to those who inquired for asking questions. Thank you for expressing your concerns and opinions and point of views and including this particular one. It's all part of the process. And as a resident, your city manager, I appreciate that very much. So in response and for the record, I read and or summarized comments and questions to the city council that evening that were texted to me as you were engaged in the mapping process in an effort to simply pass along those public comments. I didn't intentionally not share names. I was just focused on getting the information across. All that said, because I always strive to be as transparent as possible and as a courtesy to the individuals expressing this concern or for anyone else who might share that concern, I will share the source of those texts at this time for the record. The comments I read and or summarized asking if the consultant could show population numbers, demographics, and how Republicans and Democrats were split in all the districts were made by city resident Bruce Klein, who was also participating in the public meeting via the Zoom platform. The comment I read and or summarized as to whether all of the Knowles area had been captured by the consultant was from city resident Robert Goss, who was also participating in the public meeting via the Zoom platform. The comments I read and or summarized about Coventry and McAdoo slash Willow Springs as possible areas to include if one were seeking to keep Natoma Station and Prairie Oaks neighborhoods whole were from city resident Lorraine Pajoni, who was also participating in the public meeting via the Zoom platform. Ms. Pajoni is also the city's Parks and Recreation Director and is very familiar with the boundaries of those neighborhoods and was also trying to be as helpful as possible to the council. Finally, again, in the interest of full disclosure and being as transparent as possible, I would now like to ask this the attorney to confirm whether any of my actions that evening violated the Brown Act and or any other law.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. This item on last Tuesday night's council meeting was duly noticed as a public hearing item and all members of the public were able to participate in the meeting. And therefore, there are no violations of the Brown Act.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. I appreciate your time.
Okay, so then we will move to our public hearing, item one. The clerk would read into the record what that item is.
Yes, the public hearing, item number one, is a continuation of public hearing number four under the California Voting Rights Act regarding the composition of the city's voting districts pursuant to Elections Code Section one zero zero one zero. And this was continued from the council's February eighth city council meeting.
And Madam Mayor, allow me to introduce just for members, the public who might not have had the opportunity to attend last Tuesday night's meeting. This is as the clerk said, Madam Clerk indicated, this is a continued public hearing number four to transition to a bi-district election. At the last council meeting last Tuesday night, the city council voted to continue discussing the draft preferred map prepared by the city's demographer with city council and the public input to today's meeting. And the city's demographer, Mr. Doug Yocum, will now share a screen to show the draft preferred map that the council and the public last reviewed on last Tuesday night.
Very good. Good to see you all again. I will share my screen as soon as someone gives me permission.
You have permission, Doug. You should be able to share.
All right. All right, this is where we left off last week. As you can see, there are five districts here. And they're all within the population parameters. I have two quick suggestions and then we can go back to where we were and decide what we want to, what we want after that. I have two recommended cosmetic changes. If you look at the map, just north of District Five is Folsom Lake. It's currently in District Two. I would like to add it to District Five so that we don't have that appendage going north from District Five into District Two. That's a zero population change, so it won't affect any, any, anybody in the city.
Perhaps salmon.
I'm sorry?
Perhaps salmon.
Perhaps, if they're, if they're in the lake. The second suggested change, if you look at District Two on the west side of the city, it has that arm that goes down towards the Natoma Station area. There's zero population in that arm until you get to about eleven people just to the west, just to the west of this line here. Can my, can my cursor be seen on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, there's eleven people right here that are, that are technically separated from the rest of District Two. I suggest we add this area right here as District One, and it'll only be an eleven-person change. So if that is something you want to do, we can do that and then proceed with the map or we can leave it as is, entirely up to the council.
I personally would like to see those changes made. Any of my colleagues have an opinion?
No objection to those.
So Doug, do you want to make that change?
Okay, I'll start with the lake right now.
Yeah, Doug may be waiting for the word go. Just kidding.
YK is our star student on the go, counting on you.
Yeah, that's, that's a good car. Maybe after that, we can talk a little bit.
Confirming there are zero people in this change. Yeah, I need to move my Zoom persons to the other side so I can get to my tools. So I'm going to add to District One. That's eleven people. I'm going to add it to District One from District Two. Okay. Map looks a little cleaner now. I just want to say to the council, if you, when you're completed the process today and hopefully have decided on a final map, my company is ready to post it this evening so that it will be on display for seven full days prior to your next week meeting where you plan to finally adopt it.
Okay, Doug, I have one more question. Between about halfway between where the number one and the number three is and a little bit north of that, kind of along the railroad track, that, in that area, you move your cursor back down. Down? Nope, nope, nope. Okay, see where the railroad tracks are and the creek?
Yes.
Further up. Yeah, are there any residences in there? Because that's a weird line right now.
This area right here?
Yeah.
All right, let's have a look.
And I'm wondering if we shouldn't just follow Oak Avenue Parkway there? From South Lexington North?
That one?
Okay, on, okay, can you see Oak Avenue Parkway, Doug?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there some reason that that line does not go along Oak Avenue Parkway?
Area there are all of the retirement community developments along Creekside there. Across from the hospital.
Okay, but do you see where I'm talking about? It doesn't look like there's anybody in there. That looks like it's all wetlands and open space.
Are we talking about this area here?
Oh, okay, all right, never mind. Sorry, Mike. Now I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, there's, there's, there's residents in there for sure. They're all along Oak Avenue mostly, but yeah. Doesn't mean we don't need a change right there, just there are people living in that zone.
Mr. Doug, if you don't mind, can you check, you know, how many people in that kind of triangle or whatever that shape?
Sure, a lot, actually. It's all senior living locations.
That's two thousand three hundred people.
Okay, yeah, so that's not an inconsequential change.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
That's a lot.
Okay, that's, I'm, I'm okay with that then. I'm a little bit concerned about that, that last move that we made at the last meeting. That, that weird little thing, adding, taking away from District Three and putting it in District Four.
Yeah.
I think that needs to go back to be in a straight line along the, the UP alignment.
So the, the one where it, I know it's everywhere in the newspaper sales, so YK, Chalam Charla's houses, that's what Kerry, you're talking about?
Yeah.
You know, I support that. Certainly, if we are going with this map, it's a beard and it is very explicit to the residents that we are trying to save a council member. I support your recommendation, Kerry.
Thank you, YK.
Yeah, just for, just for record, even before we were going in that route, even I was endorsing three and four Azis with me and Sarah being on the same district. But afterwards, yeah, let's go with that approach and we can definitely talk about whether we are going to be adopting this with the residents' inputs. Residents spoke out. We probably may open to residents as well. But just to talk, Mr. Doug, yes, I'm supporting what Kerry made, that recommendation, at least for this map.
So you would like me to move this area back into District Three?
Yes.
All right.
Go.
Let's go.
Done.
Good.
The numbers look better that way, too.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have any comments they want to make before we?
I, I, I just, I want to share because I've had about twenty conversations with people in the past weekend. You know, there were many concerns about, about the current map that we created. And, and then I see some of these emails coming in and so, you know, I mean, it was my, it was my recommendation, oh, can't we just carve that little area out? But the reality is there are so many laws that you need to know and I don't know all those laws, but it's, it's, it sounded great. You know, and, and I've heard a lot of feedback about this map and, and how wonky, what it does to some neighborhoods. And so this past weekend, I just looked at all of the maps that came out and looking at it without biases or looking at it without, you know, trying to create or be creative. You know, it, it feels like the Bruce Klein map is the one that really truly separates neighborhoods from others. It keeps communities of interest together. And I just want to share that because I've had many conversations in the past week. And, you know, I, I want to be fair and transparent. I want to be able to say that I did hear people. You know, when you look at the different districts and how we did it. You know, so I just want to share that. It's, it's many conversations about just how this map kind of played out. And so those are my comments.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I do. So, you know, we had quite a bit of conversation at the last meeting about whether South of Fifty should be in one district or split into two. Obviously, this map splits it into two, which I indicated that I was not in favor of. I mean, if you play around on days redistricting, it is really challenging to try to split South of Fifty into two because if you split it here like we have it at East Bidwell, everything that's south of Fifty and east of East Bidwell is going to have to be attached to Empire Ranch. And so as you start to move north, I guess it is, I'm directionally challenged, and you try to pick up the, the right number of residents so that you can get to that approximately fifteen thousand, there are very limited options. Either you divide Lexington Hills, which is what's been done here, which I'm not in favor of, or you have to reconfigure that District Three so it doesn't include Lexington Hills and it just gets all of Empire Ranch, meaning that you go pretty much up to Green Valley Road. And then that would put Lexington Hills and the Parkway in a different district. We've also received a lot of feedback from residents who say they'd like Lexington Hills, Empire Ranch, and the Parkway to be in one. So, I, I mean, if, if a majority of the council still wants to pursue dividing Fifty and dividing South of Fifty into two districts, this, in my opinion, needs to be adjusted more. I think the adjustments that have been made so far are good, but we're still dividing Lexington Hills and we're still dividing Prairie Oaks.
You know, that was the big thing for me, Sarah, was, you know, I, I wanted to see South of Fifty into two. But when you play around with these maps, it's splitting into two that creates sort of a wonky neighborhoods, neighborhoods being cut off and so I, I mean, I would support putting South of Fifty into one that creates more clear lines for each district for our, for how it's broken up.
I said this at the last meeting. I still think for the reasons I stated last Tuesday that it should be split, South of the freeway for the time being until that gets populated and that will likely happen before the next redistricting ten years from now.
Yeah, I, I agree with, you know, Kerry on that part. Again, I'm, I'm just only speaking the numbers. South of Fifty is going to grow exponentially, giving that to one council member. Yes, right now it is east of, East Bidwell is, you know, growth, but West of East Bidwell is catching up so fast. We have seen so many permits pulled recently on the West of East Bidwell. So I, it's just we are talking on South of Fifty. At least two council members sharing the growth. And any challenges comes up, I'm sure there may be some challenges, two council members tag teaming together and addressing those challenges, especially on the growth side, is always a good thing. That's the only reason why I'm supporting this. It's not a split, two council members representing, of course. It's indirect word, split, South of Fifty.
I would agree with you on that, YK, but it was the way that it creates all these odd neighborhoods that, or communities of interest that get broken up, but I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, let's look at the numbers. Again, this is where I think I was looking at. On an average, right now, per month, we are pulling hundred permits, which means three hundred people. Of course, how the future is, don't know, but at least assume that there will be a good progress. It's a lot of people by two thousand and thirty.
So, question for the city attorney and the demographer. I know we have a regularly scheduled public hearing for next Tuesday. Is, could we still meet whatever deadline we're legally obligated to if we were to have two maps to consider for the next week? One where South of Fifty is split and one where it is not, and to give the public the opportunity to weigh in.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Aquino, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The answer is yes, we can. If we continue public hearing number four further to next Tuesday night, we will still meet the timeframe that we're obligated to meet, but, but we're going to be tight. Having said that, you can also invite and solicit public comment today, right now, because this is a continuation of a public hearing and the mayor, no doubt, will, when, when appropriate, reopen the public hearing to see and hear what the public might have to say. And, and you can also re, re-review the crime app. I heard somebody mention it. If that's what the council might be interested in, just compare and contrast, you can do that as well.
Okay, um, how about going back to that, the, the area along Creekside? What if we do a couple more tweaks to this map and see where that gets us? Because it looks like if we were to move that line over to the right, as I asked a couple, a little bit ago, and include the Creekside area, which is all the retirement homes, into, into District One and then move, and now that you've moved them out, I can't see the other district number, Doug.
You would need to move some of three.
Yeah.
Five, which would actually depopulate three, which is what we should be doing.
Right, and, and I think it might, I think it might also alleviate some of Sarah's concerns. For example, if we take the Creekside area, put that in District One, then we can extend District Three to the north a little bit to get the area adjacent, well, it adds more of Lexington Hills, and I believe that that would be
You'd have to go
North Lexington.
Carrie, you'd have to do it the other way. You'd have to take from three to give it to five if you're going to take from five to give it to one. So you'd actually be extending five further south.
Okay, well.
But you could do that.
Do we want to, does anybody else agree that we should maybe take a shot at moving the lines a little bit?
Well, my suggestion is if you want to keep South of Fifty split like this, that District Three encompass all of Empire Ranch, which means that you go down Golf Links and get both sides of Empire Ranch on Golf Links. You get everything along East Natoma, you go past the golf course, and you go up to Green Valley. That way Lexington Hills and the Parkway stay whole.
Okay, so do you want to, is it the pleasure of my colleagues that we tweak this map a little bit so that we can see what, what that does to the numbers?
Yeah, Sarah, I think the, the recommendation you are making, are there any other previous other maps shows? Just
Let's, I, I'd like to work on this one for the moment.
Yeah, yes, I'm looking for reference papers here.
I'm not aware of any other map that has all of Empire Ranch full.
Okay, so can we, can we see what that does and Doug, just save it as a separate draft like we did last time?
Um, okay, hold on.
Yeah.
Hey, for what it's worth, I think I'm a little bit of a contrarian here on this topic of splitting neighborhoods up. You know, we're talking about splitting South of Fifty purposely so that it gets represented by more than one person over time. You know, there's some power in having representation by multiple council members directly in communities of interest if we want to extend that term to include the Parkway and Lexington Hills, as an example. And I happen to live in the Parkway and have, you know, most of my social circle happens to live in Lexington Hills and the Parkway. But having it split is a very little consequence in the grand scheme of things. We have the exact same concerns about parks and trails and police coverage and all those things. So this map, you know, is kind of the, as it stands right now, has a number of communities or subdivision blocks that are split, but not in a detrimental way, in a way that kind of gives them more representation. So that's kind of my view of it. I am perfectly happy with us monkeying around with this, this map.
But are you?
All afternoon, but just saying.
Mike, are you otherwise happy with the map as it is?
I, I, I'm perfectly satisfied with it as it is.
So Mike, I don't disagree with you. There are advantages and disadvantages to having, you know, neighborhoods, developments, whatever you want to say, having multiple representatives or, or one representative. I agree with that. But, but part of my issue is the way that these are split. They're not, I mean, to the extent that we can, I do think we should keep neighborhoods together, but I also think that we should, the boundaries should be major streets. Not Silverhorn where literally houses on one side of the street are going to be in one district and the houses on the other side are going to be in another.
Listen, I hear you. I'm just, the, the, the voting blocks that were set up by the Census Bureau don't lend, don't lend themselves to that perfectly happening everywhere.
I agree.
So we're, we're handicapped in that way. So there's going to be something that gets split partially. We've got, you know, the boundary between one and two does that. Right now, the boundary between one and four does that and the boundary between five and three does that. So it's kind of like everybody gets a little bit, a little taste of that problem.
And
So it's fair and it's unfairness, you know?
And I, I think Mike makes a very good point. I'm just going to go back to the fact that I don't, I don't really think that any of us think that the fact that we're being forced to do the districting by the state of California is necessarily going to make life, anybody's life in Folsom better. And I think in this transitionary period, I think it, it's going to keep whoever's on the council more aware of what's happening across the street. And it's going to keep it, keep the council forced to keep in mind that, yeah, you might be representing one district, but for all five of us, what's most important is what happens throughout the city, not what happens in one district. And we all know, and we've watched this happen in other larger jurisdictions where they've had districts for a while, that they battle one another. And I think having some of these oddities is going to do exactly what Mike is suggesting and it's going to make, keep all of us having to pay attention to other districts other than just our own. And, and we all know that it takes three votes out of five to get anything done. So the people that think that, oh, I don't have to call five council members, now I only have to call one and assume that that's going to make something change, you know, we know that that's not what's going to happen in reality. So I'm, I'm kind of with Mike on that, that I don't, I don't see that breaking up people north, on North Lexington versus South Lexington, I don't see that as being a, a, a big thing. I really don't.
I'm, I'm happy to, you know, take a stab at making the, improving this map. I'm just saying that it's, it's pretty good right now.
I agree with you, Mike. I, I'm happy with it right now, now that we've made those other changes. So is anybody interested in making any other changes, changes to this one or does somebody want to make a motion to adopt this one?
Well, let's hear from the public.
Public, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's open up to the public then.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody with hands raised, Krista?
I'm looking here. We need to give people a minute to raise their hands, so we do have a few coming up. So if you want, we can go ahead and get started. We'll start the three-minute timer, if that's useful.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay, and we'll give the one-minute warning. Our first speaker will be Teresa Garcia, and Teresa will be followed by Bruce Klein. So Teresa, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm on my phone, am I, can I, can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, thank you, and please forgive my ignorance, I'm new to the area, I'm new to understanding the whole elections process, but I guess talking about the disadvantages and/or advantages of having split neighborhoods, isn't that a moot point since we're going by district and the very purpose of doing by-district elections? One of the criteria is to not split communities of interest, and in my limited understanding, neighborhoods are communities of interest. I'm still very much against splitting the South of Fifty, and although I'm also geographically challenged, I really think that we're, it looks like we're still splitting up neighborhoods, i.e. communities of interest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask the city attorney to just clarify something for us one more time? Can you please just give us the definition of communities of interest? Because I feel like we're extending the actual meaning of that.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Kozelski, and with your indulgence, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. The question is very, very pertinent to the council's action and decision, but it's not an absolute. The law does not prevent the council from dividing communities when necessary. So the criteria is to the extent practical, the geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or local community of interest shall be respected in a manner that minimizes its division. So it is contemplated that there are going to be situations where the council might have to make the tough decisions, because no map is ever perfect, since we cannot tell people where to move to and not to live. And, and part of the criteria the council has to balance among the other criterias is to make sure that each district has approximately equal population. And the definition of community of interest is this, it is a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district for purpose of effective and fair representation. Some of the examples are school district boundaries, neighborhood boundaries, as commonly known, and homeowners associations, for example, some are some are even within a particular neighborhood, you know, you have numerous or multiple homeowners associations in one neighborhood, and also retail commercial districts. It is important for the public to also understand that the council is aware that communities of interest do not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates, and that's a given. The council is focused on neighborhoods, subdivisions, communities, and population, and those are all very pertinent considerations in joining a map.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Okay, your next speaker will be Bruce Klein, and Bruce will be followed by Scott Rafferty.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having this hearing, and I think I do agree with Sarah that there may be a need for an additional hearing on the 22nd. I still believe this map can be improved significantly. I still do not believe South of Fifty should be split, but the bigger issue, the biggest issue I have is what I call the triangle, the Simron Willow Creek Triangle. And that triangle is where I live, happens to be where Rosario lives, and it's right across the Parkway from where Mayor Howe lives. What you've done in this map with this triangle, or pork chop, as some people call it, is you've grouped our neighborhood with the historic district, no connection. You've grouped our neighborhood with north of the river, no connection. Instead, what you've done is taken our neighborhood away from our fellow neighbors in Willow Creek and our neighbors in Briggs Ranch. So really what you've got is, and you do split right down a residential street of Randall. We have much more of a connection, I think, with Briggs Ranch rather than others. My maps all kept that triangle together with either District One or pulled it into District Five, and it should be pulled out of there, so it is all one neighborhood. That's clearly a community of interest. I've talked to people in the historic district who are very involved in that district. I've talked to people north of the river, all of which agree. The other thing that I would like you to make sure you do is to, when you talk about sequencing, please make sure that you allow additional public comment on the sequencing issue.
You're at one minute, sorry.
As to the split between three and five presently, that zigzags along some residential streets. It's really unfortunate that under these maps, you can't expand them and really look down at the details of those, but in my writings that I posted, I believe it cuts down Brower Circle and Reeves and those areas, and it should follow a major street in some fashion. And I worked extensively trying to come up with a split map, and I did submit one in my comments. So that's what I'll have to say for now, and I ask that you make sure you allow additional public comment when you ultimately come up with something, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. We will now move to Scott Rafferty. When you're ready, Scott, go ahead, I'll start the timer.
I am pleased that you've made that change, because I think it was very hard to justify that fishtail. Of course, there's still the sequencing, I agree with Mr. Klein that there should be a public comment on that. But, you know, it's more than just being allowed to speak for two minutes. I don't know how many people are here today, it's the middle of the day, not an easy time for people. It's more about transparency, and there's more to the Brown Act than was previously stated. I mean, this process should have more public input. I don't know what deadlines people are focused on, but the deadline was last September, 27th, and we've been patient, because we think the community should draw the map. I don't want to draw the map, I mean, I'm good at drawing maps, but I want it to be from the community, and I think that was just completely lost in the last meeting. You talked about your constituents in terms of trading them, swapping them, and then grabbing them. And you talked, you referred to them as stuff and pieces, and said neighborhoods were isolated, as if they didn't connect, go to the same libraries, parks, schools as anybody else. And I think that was a pretty severe departure from the process. I look at this map, and neighborhoods are a special kind of community of interest, or called out in the statute. And usually, there are different conceptions of neighborhoods, usually the police have neighborhoods, or the zoning map sometimes reflects neighborhoods. Here, all I see is the myfolsom.com definition, which seems to hew pretty closely to what the mayor's been talking about. By that definition, four of these five districts split four neighborhoods.
You're at one minute, sir.
So, you know, I think there's perhaps more to be done, and I would hope that there would be more collaboration, because at the end of the day, you know, you don't have the right to draw your own map unilaterally, you've gone past the safe harbor. And we'd like to work toward a resolution of what the population growth really is going to be. Is it going to be like the water report, where it's actually 15,000 people by the 2024 election? I'm beginning to doubt that, but that seems to be what the report said. So I hope we can work together, but so far, it's, it hasn't been that way. And we're committed to try to get the best answer, if you are, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Cheryl Davis, Cheryl, when you're ready, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Howe, members of the City Council, my name is Cheryl Davis, and I'm a resident of Empire Ranch. At the last public hearing, as the council members tweaked the map, it seemed that the task slid into more movement of boundaries to get the population numbers needed without regard to neighborhoods, and to protect the incumbencies of all the council members, excuse me. By the end of that public hearing, the map had changed from having three districts shared among the current incumbents to all five council members having their own districts. The most visible example, of course, was between District Three and Four, which was just corrected, with Councilmember Chamul Chera, you know, agreeing to move that part, that carve-out back to District Three. But after a closer review of the maps after the hearing, I could see that, you know, there was more tweaking that ended up negatively impacting our communities. Mr. Klein called it a pork chop, I called it a pizza slice, but a slice of Central Folsom Neighborhood that affixed, was affixed to District Two, which includes American River Canyon and Historic Folsom, was made to accommodate Councilmember Rodriguez, and leaving Mayor Howe as the sole incumbent in District One. And if you note, that slice, or that pork chop, is not even contiguous to the other neighborhoods of American River Canyon or Old, Histor, I almost called it Old Sac, Historic Folsom. It's contiguous to the prison. And then that move, once you took that move away from District One, that changed the population numbers, so District One had to move further southwest, splitting Prairie Oaks and Willow Springs neighborhoods between District One and Four. And then Councilmember Kozelski became the sole council member residing in District Five. But however, to garner enough population count there, District Five splits Lexington Hills and took in parts of Empire Ranch, separating that from District Three.
You're at one minute, Cheryl, sorry.
Thank you. The sum of all the actions council took to ensure that each incumbent had their own district resulted in splitting the major communities, major Folsom communities of Lexington Hills, Prairie Oaks, Willow Springs, Central Folsom, and Empire Ranch. I know that Mr. Koz, or Councilmember Kozelski just asked the city attorney to read that, but every staff report since the very first public hearing has defined community of interest, and it's on page four of today's report, that communities of interest do not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. And it just seemed like the exercise that got us to the map, the preferred map today, was an exercise in preserving the incumbencies of the current council members. Folsom City Council has afforded an opportunity to adopt a district election map that respects the communities of interest of Folsom, instead of the community of the special interest or the incumbents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Okay, our next speaker will be Barbara Larry, and Barbara will be followed by Bob Holderness. So Barbara, when you're ready, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate being able to comment on this again. I also appreciate Councilmember Chamul Chula's willingness to clean up his section of the map, or the one that's been ascribed to keeping him in his seat. I'm going to reiterate what I said at the first council hearing on this, and that is, these maps should reflect the interests of the communities and not the interests of keeping certain council members in their seats. I respect that everybody worked hard to get their, to get elected to their seats, but I think we really need to focus on keeping the communities of interest together. It's been stated by a couple of other people today, and I just want to reiterate that I believe that's true. I think Mr. Klein worked hard on creating a map that did keep several communities intact, and there are still areas of this map that don't do that. I'm very concerned that all of the historic district and the people that have been involved in activities there over the years are still within the same district. I do appreciate that Natoma Station was left intact, just for a little bit of history. You know, we worked hard in this community, it was a master-planned community, and have had interest in every neighborhood in this area between Folsom Boulevard, Prairie City, Highway 50, and Blue Ravine. And the same has been true for people in Lexington Hills. In the 90s, there were a lot of issues, and everybody in Lexington Hills banded together to take care of those issues. The same is true for Briggs Ranch, people banded together to get parks built, or a park built in Briggs Ranch. So these are longstanding communities of interest, they're not just, that somebody moved into a certain subdivision and never worked together before.
Barbara, you're at one minute.
Thank you, people in American River Canyon have been working on issues. So I really think that this map, or another map, could do with some tweaking, and I'd appreciate the council taking a look at that, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, next we'll hear from Bob Holderness, and Bob will be followed by Robert Goss. Bob, you need to unmute yourself, and you'll be good to go. I think you're still muted, Bob.
Mr. Holderness, if you jiggle your mouse We got it, I think, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, unlike Cheryl Davis, I don't think the purpose of this exercise is to eliminate incumbents from their offices. As one of the council members mentioned at the last meeting, the people of Folsom elected the five of you, they did not discard the five of you. This effort should not be an effort at discarding, Cheryl Davis seems to think it should be. I don't agree with that, I think that a fair-minded effort to give each of the five of you an opportunity to continue to serve the people of Folsom is consistent with what the people of Folsom want. Otherwise, they would not have elected you to public office, and that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next will be Robert Goss.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you. I'd like to chime in and just add that I concur on the eliminating the triangle or pork chop, or whatever you want to call it, that's bounded by East Natoma and the two power line corridors in District Two, and to make up the population that, and that's already, that district seems to be a little bit low already, but to make up for that, I think the neighborhoods that are north or northwest of Glen Drive are well-connected to the historic district to make up for that population. Now, that change would make some sense. And then fundamentally, I think there's no way getting around that there are going to be some neighborhoods that are split, but, and this plan is mostly doing that, but using major and at least moderate-sized streets to make those changes. I would say Silverhorn is one of those, and that might be, I think, a logical place, even though you do have, or you would have residents on either side of the street being in opposite districts, but I think that's a pretty significant street, and one that's logical in terms of making a split there. So that might help begin to rebalance neighborhood or District Three, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, you have no further request to speak.
Okay, sorry. Any other questions or comments from council members?
Well, I'll just suggest that we play around with the southern border of District Two to make it run along East Natoma Street. East Natoma kind of makes a 45-degree angle, and I think we could go both, both parts of that.
Are you suggesting
Are you suggesting taking that section and adding it to District One? Or District Five?
Probably, well, I guess District One for right now. Or either one, just to see what it looks like with the boundary move.
Honestly, I'm not sure that I'm in favor of that. And I think of the council members, actually, I know of the council members. I've been here the longest, and that neighborhood is actually, that was well-established in the early 80s. And I don't see that as being dramatically different from American River Canyon, nor do I see it as being isolated from the historic district. The historic district itself is always going to have its own uniqueness, but it's not large enough, certainly, to be on its own. And then I'll make a further comment about this, this whole communities of interest thing. I know that we've all had conversations with a lot of people, probably in the last couple of months. The most frequent conversation that I've had with people in the last, in the last couple of months has been, why on earth are we doing this? And I think it's because most of the people out there don't realize that this is even going on. And what everybody has said to me, and this is all unsolicited, and frankly, it was mostly from people that I do not know. It was all about, but you know, Folsom is one community. So all of this suggestion that we're breaking up communities of interest, to me, doesn't make sense, because I don't see that anybody feels that, you know, my neighborhood is dramatically different from Natoma Station, or American River Canyon, or Montrose, or any of those things. And some of the comments from Mr. Rafferty actually are completely inappropriate. I mean, he actually made a reference to myfolsom.com. Does that even still exist? So I'm not sure that we should be getting information from social media sites that don't even continue to exist anymore. And he made reference to people go to the same library. Well, Folsom only has one library. So everybody in Folsom is going to the same library. People in Folsom are not only going to the park that happens to be in their neighborhood, because Folsom is such a youth sports-oriented town. People are going to every park in Folsom. So this whole issue about communities of interest and that we're breaking them up, to me, makes no sense. We don't have any, any, any people that are underrepresented. We don't have ethnic neighborhoods. We don't have many of the issues that I believe led to the California Voting Rights Act in the first place. And to, just to reiterate Mr. Holderness's comments, you know, I don't know that anybody's doing this to save anybody or to eliminate anybody. We all got elected by the people of Folsom, and we either do or do not get reelected based on our actions and what we do to lead policy in the city of Folsom to make sure that we remain one of the best places to live, work, recreate, retire, you know, add whatever other item you want to that sentence. But, so I don't, I don't see the city, even this map, breaking up communities of interest. I just think that's hogwash. Anybody else have any other comments?
Well, I'm going to take exception with a lot of that, Carrie.
You can.
You know, the public has weighed in, and the public wants neighborhoods to be preserved to the extent that they can be. They want to see districts divided by lines that make sense and not having where we live be the criteria to make those districts. And so, you know, I do think Briggs Ranch and Willow Creek, it does kind of feel like one neighborhood. You know, you're driving down Briggs Ranch Drive, or Willow Creek Drive, or whatever. I mean, so to me, we've had lots of maps that have been submitted where East Natoma is the boundary, and it's because it makes sense.
And I don't think there was enough population in, for that area.
Yeah, yeah, we have the, we have the curious complexity to this that the, I'm just going to refer to the entirety of what's north of the river as American River Canyon, even though it has segmentation to it. That, that area is, is too small, population-wise, to stand on its own in a district, as is the historic district, as is Natoma Station. And to some extent, you could say the same thing about Prairie Oaks and the center part of the city. The converse is true, south of 50, we've established, because everybody wants to split it, and most of us would like to see it split, that that area is going to be too populated to stand on its own, at least for the time being. And the distinctions that exist between Briggs Ranch, Willow Creek, Cimarron Parkway, Lexington Hills, and Empire Ranch, and, and the Broadstone pieces that are on the east side of East Bidwell, to me, feel very slight, unless you happen to have been, you know, one of the pioneering homeowners of one of those neighborhoods. The, the type of people that live in all those areas are one big thing. And the, you know, they share three elementary schools and a high school. And there's not, while it would be nice, and it would be clean, to use a major street as a dividing line, there's too much population in those areas for them to stand alone, so we'd have to divide it someplace. So there's always going to be some messiness to this. So if, you know, I have said before, if we want to revert back and take a look at the Klein map, it is cleaner and more compact, and has a little less of the neighborhood splitting, but that's its only advantage, as far as I'm concerned. This map, as we've drawn it, is a little, you know, the edges are a little convoluted, but I don't think they're detrimental to anybody's enjoyment of their time living here in the city of Folsom.
If this is one of the maps that we choose, I'm fine with the way it is right now.
Okay. Why, Kay?
I'm sorry, Carrie, can I, can I comment on one other thing? It was suggested in the comments from Mr. Rafferty that there should be more direct input by residents, you know, in not so many words. And sadly, it's the five of us that are stuck with making the decision about what to go forward with and present as a completed map to the public. And it's not a situation where we have a ad hoc committee of a certain segment of our residents who get to have direct input on the boundaries, aside from the opportunity we gave them today to suggest changes to this map. And nobody gave us any meaningful suggestions as to adjustments to these boundaries to improve it, just wholesale commentary about it being inadequate in some way or another. That's all, that's my last word, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mike, I think to add to your point. You guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. To add to your point, you know, I'm wondering, because we need to have, we have about 30-plus public. If you guys think it is not going to take too long, or no, too much time consumption, my recommendation is go district by district and open up for a public hearing and see whether anything we can adjust there, knowing 15,008 people is an average for every district. So let them see it. I know this gave us a feedback lumpsome. It's confusing as well. You know, let's pick the District One, you know, allocate it 30 minutes or 15 minutes, and after we all agree as a five council members, let's take the inputs from the public, see what they are going to talk about District One. And the average number is 15,008. Then go to District Two, vice versa. That's my recommendation. That's where it's more cleaner to adopt district by district in respect of, you know, who lives where.
So I just want to share that in the past four months, more so in the past month, I have seen social media posts go out. I've seen emails come through. It's been in The Telegraph. I think that the city did quite an exceptional job in getting the, getting the communication out there that if you would like input, this is how you do it. And so I think that the public has been given quite a fair share of opportunities to communicate and let them know, this is what's happening. Would you like to give input? This is how you do it. This is the email you send your comments to. So I, I, I think that the public has had a really good opportunity to provide their input to these maps.
I agree with Rosario, and I appreciate the fact, why, Kay, that you'd like to get more people involved. But for those that are, that follow what's going on with the city council and pay close attention, I think the vast majority of those people are on this call today. There are others that may or may not have watched this. There's been a few people that have gotten involved in this effort that hadn't previously been involved. And so I don't know that attempting to reach out, you know, other than soliciting input from individuals that happen to live in a certain neighborhood that have chosen not to get involved in it to this point, is not necessarily going to lead to anything. So I'm frankly happy with this map the way it is. And I just don't see that additional public input is going to change this very much. And I, and I.
I agree, the public has been given a lot of opportunity to weigh in. My concern is we are disregarding the public input. We had emails today, just today, from people saying, we live in Prairie Oaks. Please don't split Prairie Oaks. We've had emails from people saying, we live in Lexington Hills. Please don't split Lexington Hills. Please move the boundary to East Natoma Street. I understand that this is a giant jigsaw puzzle, and it's not going to be perfect, but it can be a lot better than it is right now. I mean, if you're going to try to explain to somebody what the boundary of District Three is, or District Five, what, what are you going to say? This half of Bauer Circle is in one district, and this half of our, I mean, it's ridiculous.
So Sarah, I think, I know Mike made a recommendation as well, like Rosario made. Again, it's not about the Bruce's map. That seems to be answering some of your questions, Sarah. Is it wise to, you know, at least take a look at what that is? I know we took a look at Bruce's map at the beginning, and we came to this. Is that a wise thing, at least? You know, take a look at it, and let, feel it, and come back if we need to come back here.
I just think that we really, I, the last meeting, we did, we spent so much time on trying to keep the communities together. But one of the things, it was the number of people in each district that makes it very difficult to cut and paste. And, and then you have another problem in another district, and you've got to do more cutting and pasting. And so I think when, from the last meeting, and the population of each district, I think this is, this map is pretty good. Otherwise, we can spend many hours here, cutting and pasting and moving people around, and some neighborhoods are going to get cut off from others, and it's bound to happen with the way that our city is set up.
You know, you know what, for what it's worth, maybe, I, Rosario, I agree with you, generally speaking. It's probably worthwhile, though, given, given now that I'm looking at this one more time, the, that triangular spot that's right at the dead center of the map that has Creekside in it. If we actually flip that, oh, God, no. I think we can do a little twist in the center of this map that will shift some population from five to one, three to five, and one to four, that might actually resolve a little bit of the Lexington Hills issue and a little bit of the Prairie Oaks issue, and not maybe dramatically change the result. I think it's worth a try, at least. But if everybody is happy stopping here, like I said, I'm happy stopping here. I'm happy reverting to the Klein map, and I'm willing to spend time adjusting these boundaries one more time.
On your thought, Mike, if you can give, and I know you gave a couple of moves from one to one, one to other one.
Yeah.
Maybe let's take number one. So if you can give at least your thought one more time.
So the, so the, yeah, so the suggestion, the suggestion would be to take the triangular area at the dead center that's between Oak Avenue, Blue Ravine, and East Natoma.
It's the Creekside piece.
The Creekside piece, yeah, and flip, flip it from five to one.
Before we go there.
Yeah.
Let me, let me make a copy of this. Let me keep, keep this one as is. And then I can bring up another one exactly like this that we can play around with. Is that, is that what you'd like to do?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please.
Take me just a few minutes here. Okay, fire away.
I am prepared for this to not get better and to throw it out, just so everybody knows. But here is my suggestion, that the triangular section at the dead center of the map, taking it and moving it from five to one.
Oh, you mean from, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's the first of the, of three, of a three-way trade here. Or a modification, excuse me. Okay, and now, yeah, now there needs to be two additional changes, right? So there needs to be a move of population from one to four, and from three to five. So the three to five would adjust, would be taking population from three to five and cleaning up that edge through Lexington Hills. So just above where the number three shows on the map, that area.
Start here?
Yeah, so we're moving from three to five. And, no, 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 no. Moving from three to five, so you got to pick some territory in three to move it to five. And there is a relatively major street through there called Silverhorn, so everything to the out, to the outside of it might be a starting point. So to the left, yeah. So there, there, and then work your way down that street. And now we're back, we're back to having the college block be a little bit of an issue for the people that live on the opposite side of South Lexington. But let's see what that change does first.
This one here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so now if you switch the, the, like, the, the college block, which is that big kind of empty-looking one right there.
This one here?
No, 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 to your left.
Right here.
Yeah, right in there.
All this?
So, so the piece that is on the other side of East Bidwell should go to District One or Four. So you're gonna, you're about to isolate it. I don't know if you want to make that change first, but this would be the other change to go from three to five. And now we have to choose a different border than East Bidwell between three and four.
Let me take care of the, of the neighborhood, this one right here.
Now, now I personally think that based on the quick growth of that chunk of South of Fifty down at the bottom of the city right there, that having District Three dramatically underpopulated makes sense, but we are testing the legal boundary of that right here. So we gotta add some more population to District Three along the East Bidwell barrier to make this work.
What should we do?
Well, I don't want to monopolize this entirely, but you got to start at East Bidwell and just start working your way, working your way west till we get that District Three to a reasonable underpopulation.
How about that Creekside area goes, gets moved? Cause right now one is way overpopulated.
Yeah, so, so we gotta make a swap between one and four to finish this story here. Yeah.
Well, we may need to add, add to three, because we're at thirteen percent under on that one. I agree with you that that's where, probably where the largest amount of growth will take place in the next decade.
Yeah.
But that's at almost thirteen percent under and one is at fifteen percent over.
Yeah. So listen, this is, this is why I was prepared for this to fail. It, it doesn't, there's no logical way to do this right now. We can, we can get the boundaries between neighborhoods to make better sense. But we're probably not going to end up with a better arrangement of districts than what we had or what's in the Klein map. There's going to be something left broken in half.
In which case I'm, I'm inclined to go back to the original version of this map.
Yeah.
Just because the numbers are so far off on this one now.
Yeah. Yeah, there's just such a, there's a, such a heavy concentration of population right in that center space between three and five or kind of along that bounder, boundary right now that adding South of Fifty to it is what makes it so difficult. I mean, ultimately. Yeah, okay, I, listen, like I said, I was prepared for this to not work out. I just wanted to give it a shot.
Uh, Mike, just to add some more for three, can we extend the north side a little bit more from five?
Sure, yeah, that, that is part of Empire Ranch at the upper right.
Upper right.
Kind of Sarah's original suggestion, Doug, so that area lead up to
If you go, if you go all the way up to Green Valley Road, which we can't move in.
Let's add.
Madam Mayor, you do have a hand raised for comment. I don't know if you want to continue to take comments from the public, his hands are raised, but I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, let's make this change first. And how many, how many people do you have wanting to speak, Krista?
Just one right now.
Okay, make this change and then let whoever that is speak.
Okay.
And I, my apologies, but I, I can't see whose hands are raised.
It's okay, that's why I'm letting you know.
Okay, so maybe the pork chop, the, excuse me, the other pork chop, the Creekside slice needs to actually switch back.
Yeah, try that.
At this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Switch that back from one to five. Hey, look at that. That's actually pretty good.
It actually is.
Sarah, I think you had a really good suggestion there at the very beginning of this meeting.
Well, I mean, I would still like to see the southern border of District Two follow East Natoma, which means that everything north of the river, all the way over to where that gritty area would be part of District Two.
Sarah, if that is, then I know just now we have added this kind of triangle on its end.
That's been, that's been there all along.
Yeah, do we have two pizza slices we're dealing with? This is the North Pizza Slice.
Yeah. Doug, if you don't mind, can you check how many people in that slice?
Okay.
Please. Is, yeah, is Natoma's that, that slice? Number two. Yeah. Eight hundred, one thousand fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred, yes.
So the previous one, Mike, the one just now we added, that has two thousand, two thousand one.
Twenty-three or twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you, listen, if you take that out of District Two and make it part of District One, then you gotta go scavenge the same population from District Five. That's your only choice.
That's right.
And then we're pretty close to back where we started with the Klein map.
Yeah.
So
Well, except for Klein doesn't split South of Fifty.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. So now you gotta, you gotta take the, you gotta take the lake and some of District Five up there at the top and give it to District Two.
On the, on the, in a triangle side where right now Doug's cursor is, Doug cursor, can you go down a little bit down that, little down, little down? Yeah, that area, all the little blocks are above left side one, is that it? Did we run through that split? Yeah, that's, just want to see it, yeah. Any other major streets can cover that side?
We, we tried this one and there's a pretty okay dividing line along those railroad tracks.
There's no people here.
Yeah, I was the, I'm sorry, the, uh, between Sibley and the railroad tracks was kind of the one that we had, we had tried out
Yeah.
Once before.
What's the main state coming there?
Sibley.
Sibley?
Yeah.
The previous map, the numbers, the, before this last change, the numbers were, were where they needed to be.
Yeah.
And this one, so.
Mike, just for the type of us, I think there is a Glen Drive. If we can follow that and expand to, I know there will be a problem with one, we can figure it out, that problem. The Glen Drive.
Okay.
Too many people?
Quite a lot, I'm sure.
I don't know where that is.
Your cursor is sitting right over where it says Glen Drive, actually.
Yeah, there you go.
It kind of, it kind of sweeps under the streets there and then heads further east.
This section here? Or add it to two?
Yes, so when I was, Y K, when I was playing in Days Re-Districting, trying to figure out how to split, if you, if you do a South of Fifty split, my District Two included everything north of the river, so all the way across the top of the map. Came down, East Natoma was the bottom southern border, I guess you'd say. Then you get the historic district and then yes, Riley and Glen were the other boundaries. Riley and Glen, and then you can go straight over to the river or come down Folsom Boulevard, because there's really not much population in there.
Right, so give a shot, Glenn, uh, Doug, I, I hope, now you see the Glen Drive?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Your source is one and giving to two. Yeah, okay, that's good. Because two needs some more right now.
That's only three hundred and sixty-nine.
Yeah, you have to cover the other side too.
Keep, keep working east from Sibley there.
East, yeah.
For Riley.
Oh, the numbers are going to get really big, real, the number's going to get really big, really fast.
Yeah, but then we'll make an adjustment.
Yes, we are.
Twelve hundred, thirteen.
There you go.
Fourteen hundred. Wow, it's almost even, fourteen forty-nine.
Two is fixed.
Yeah, let's go for it and we'll check it out, how the number, one, two is now one point six, that's good.
Can you zoom out for a second? So if you make green go all the way across the map, District Two go all the way across the map.
Using East Natoma?
Using East Natoma.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so the, all the little slivers with the lake and then that piece right there, yep.
Or two?
From five to two.
Correct.
But that looks okay to me, I mean, between two and one, but let's try it.
This corner here?
Yeah, it's got some little tiny pieces there.
Fifty-one.
Yeah, just East Natoma is, will be the boundary.
I've got to find East Natoma, I think.
The bottom border of what you just highlighted is East Natoma.
There you go, all right.
Yeah.
That's only three hundred and eighty-five there?
You should zoom into the corner, the east, the right-hand corner there. There's a little wedge that probably I'm not sure how that hits right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that little, that little wedge should switch over.
Three eighty-five.
So what does that do?
So then for, I, I guess it would be District One, because that's in the center. You'd have the northern boundary would be East Natoma. You could use Blue Ravine as the southern boundary. And then pick up a little bit of, um,
Blue Ravine is here. This whole neighborhood right here would have to be taken out of one.
We need to move from four to one to balance the population out. Cause if, something is going to be underpopulated, four wants to be underpopulated.
My recommendation is, Sarah, I don't, Sarah, you're saying something, I'm Mike.
I was just saying, if we're going to leave something underpopulated, it should be Districts Three and Four, because they're going to gain population south of Fifty.
Yeah, my recommendation is just a thought, on, on the center, exactly, Doug, if you can come a little right, little down, yeah, that's where, if we can zoom up that one. Those are opposite communities should be together. We can remove that from four and give it to one. The right side, yeah, that block. What do you guys think? Those are opposite gated communities.
Yeah, 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 that's, we, we, yeah, we switched that once already, that's, that still works.
Yeah, you can take that one from four and give it to one. How many? Five hundred, yeah. Yep, go, sir. Almost even. Let's take a big picture, how the numbers are, looks like almost even numbers everywhere. I, I know we have to underpopulate three and five, four, we will figure it out that. Point nine four, minus five two.
This is what I call a beautiful map.
Beautiful map.
Just numbers, not necessarily shapes.
Yeah, well, we gave it, we gave a good shot considering residents' inputs of keeping the major streets.
That's something I, it's, it's just so hard to tell. Are, 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 for the most part, are we following major streets? I know we got East Natoma in there. I think we have Blue Ravine.
Only deviation is Blue Ravine down through number one, so we're not using it to separate one and four, but I don't think we can. I, I just don't think it's possible based on the density of the population in that area.
Yes.
So there's going to be a split running kind of through the, you know, secondary streets. Just like Silverhorn ends up, people living across the street from each other, but in different districts. Which just for what it's worth, being from Chicago originally, every single Aldermanic district in Chicago has a boundary that runs down a street where there are houses on either side of it, but are in different districts. So this is not a at-all uncommon situation.
Mr. Doug, if you don't mind, can we see the right side of the map a little bit? What's on the right? Yeah, if you can pull that other side.
Where, sir?
I know, I, this is good. I, I can see it from this. Well, the numbers looks almost even. We have to remove some from three to give more room and remove some from four to give more room. That's what we had to talk.
Yeah, listen, numbers-wise, it's better, boundaries-wise, it's a little better. But overall, I don't think it's dramatically better than what we had.
Open this for public comment and see.
I was going to say, should we take some public comment?
Sure.
Well, the, the hand that was raised was lowered, so let's see if, let's give a moment here for people to raise their hands to comment. I have a couple of requests. So first to speak will be Peggy Blair. And Peggy, I'll start the three minutes, then you'd be the one-minute warning. So when you're ready, Peggy, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Peggy Blair, and I just want to mention that the changes that you made there at the corner of Blue Ravine and Green Valley at East Natomas. You've taken Espinade out of the Parkway and it is a member of the Parkway. And that corner there, the two corners there at Blue Ravine and Green Valley, those are also kind of a community with, with five. I don't know that it would affect your population that much to, to put that into District Five.
Is that all from you, Peggy?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I didn't want to cut you off if you had more to say. Okay, thank you. So next to speak will be Bruce Klein and Bruce will be followed by Robert Goss. Bruce, when you're ready, go ahead.
Thanks to Krista, thanks to members of the council. So I had played with a map that split South of Fifty and I put it into my comments and I would encourage you to look at that also. I think you're making some progress here. I still believe that Willow Creek and Briggs should be connected, but I think, you know, you're making some good headway. I'm having a really hard time seeing how the numbers are and maybe someone, Dave or Doug rather, you could explain where these numbers are. When I look at Days Re-Districting, I can see exact numbers of which is, exists in certain districts and I can also look at the demographics. That's super helpful. If that can stay up, it, it makes it much easier for me to track. Thank you.
Sometimes, well, the map hides it, so.
What demographics are you, what demographics are you?
There's, there's, we call it a data view.
Let me, let me, stop for a second, Doug. Bruce, what demographics are you looking for?
Well, you start with population, but you go, if you're in Days Re-Districting, you can look at populations by, by race, by, you know, this by race, by, you know, this Asian numbers change in certain areas. That was one of the things that have been considered. You can look at a Democrat-Republican issue as to what. Hold on, Carrie, before you go on. I, you you can look at Republican versus Democrat and see whether you have X number of districts leaning one way or the other. And I know you said last time that it was illegal to do so. I found nothing that suggests that it's illegal to do so. And it is in the Dave's redistricting program, so that would suggest to me that it's okay to look at. And I'm not using it as an overall, are we gonna kick the map out or not kick the map out? What I think is important to look at, I don't think anybody would want a map that has all Democrat-leaning districts and all Republican-leaning districts. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Okay, next will be Robert Goss. Robert, when you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you. In the spirit of keeping districts three and four on the light side due to growth, I think there's an opportunity to move some population logically from four to one. And that would be in the little area bounded by McAdoo, Iron Point, and Prairie City. Going from four to one, that's correct. And then following that, I have one other suggestion to look at. So if you if you look at McAdoo, which is gonna center the screen right now. And then down to Iron Point, on the, which would be on the south, and then Prairie City on the west side. So that, yes, that Doug, that that's correct. That would be the area that I would suggest. Then if you go back out, one other suggestion to move a little bit of population from three to five. So to keep three a little bit lighter to account for growth would be right where your cursor was, which is Trowbridge Circle. Right below there, yep, yep. Or Trowbridge, Trowbridge Lane, it's up on the top, it's kind of a half-moon shape, top left, there you go. And then the cul-de-sacs, Orchard Terrace and Bauer, or whatever it is, I can't quite see it. But if you nip that off of three and put it into five, I think we're getting really close to to leaving a little bit of growth room in three and four and balancing that out. That's that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, look, Sarah, our next speaker will be Scott Rafferty.
Thank you. I I just wanted to offer a couple of points of information. Is there a way, Mr. Yocum, you could get rid of this, so we could look at the demographic thing? The the window on top. Right, so I think what is relevant, or what I would look a little bit at is this here, oh, you don't see what I'm doing on my screen, but where it says percent ST fifteen nineteen M two N H A P I, that's showing that you've gotten almost to twenty-five percent Asian C VAP, which is 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 an improvement. From that standpoint, in Dave's, the C VAP is not adjusted for the prison. And that is, that is really important in the case of Folsom, and that's been kind of difficult to compare maps because of that. And I also would say that I would tend not to look at the political data from Dave's. Unless it was in a situation where somebody was accusing favoring a political party, and then you might go into that, but I I would steer away from that and and but that that one number about the Asian C VAP is worth looking at, you know. I'm not saying that you have to absolutely maximize it, but thirty percent, which we had in one-on-one B is a lot different than twenty-one percent, and this is moving to where it's a meaningful influence district. So that was just for your information, but I think this is moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, you have no other request to speak at this time.
Any other questions from the council members, comments?
On some of those comments, you know, our residents made, I think it's worth looking at it. That way we can bring some numbers down to four and three. My thought is if we can put Robert Goss, if we we don't want to miss it, he's making some recommendation, you know, he lived here. And I mean, of course, we all lived here, but.
Yeah, he was talking about between three and five, I think Chambersburg, which is technically in Lexington Hills.
So he he made two suggestions. You were looking at the first one. And that was to take the little area between along Prairie City across from Folsom High School and consider moving it from four to one. Because it kind of sits, yeah, right there. Just to depopulate four a bit.
Could you use Blue Ravine and Riley right there as the boundaries?
His his suggestion was Prairie City, Iron Point to McAdoo.
I don't, I don't think you need, you may not be able to get over to McAdoo without, because that's that's a, that's a lot of houses right in there.
There's apartments in that area.
Yeah, I think you may get to that, where the number four, the road, the north-south road that the number four is sitting over, I think definitely get to there.
Yeah.
That may work.
Hundred, six, seven hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred. Thousand, whoops, nineteen hundred. You hit something, it a lot at the end.
Yeah, you 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 end up with two illegal districts at that point.
No.
So that's too much.
That's too much, two thousand. But anything, okay, got it. Yeah, no, he made that that other session, right?
We're going from three to five now.
Right, kind of Chambersburg, Belmar Court, Orchard Terrace Court area Barbara was talking about.
That's the first one he talked about, but let me show you what's gonna happen right now.
Yeah.
He wants these two. Watch this.
That's how that street is, though.
It's still five hundred. Five forty-four adding to five from three, yeah.
At least you have, you you're still legal at this point.
Yeah, let's give a shot and see how it looks. Six forty.
Is that too much?
Eight hundred sixty.
That's too much.
Oh, now, yeah, it's it's not that it's too much, it's that you're now getting into that exotic boundary problem that we started with. So I think you gotta, there's a center, there's a center section that's making, it's kind of pointing downward. I think you gotta eliminate that. Now, to the left of that. No. That piece, that was the one I I was trying to target.
Not now, we can go back, go back to the top ones, Mr. Doug, yeah, those ones you can add, yeah. It's total four hundred and thirty-eight extra.
At least you're still legal at this point.
Let's let's give a shot on that route. It may not look great, the shape, but reasonably.
Yeah, the shape, the shape doesn't look good, but that does, it is the separation between Lexington Hills and Empire Ranch, correct?
Yeah.
Not entirely.
Yeah, there's a little piece there that I think belongs in, I mean, you can zoom in, but there's still a little piece that's Lexington Hills versus.
Yeah, it's not a little piece, it's it's the entire circle there of what's it called? I don't have my, I can't, it's so small, I can't read it without putting my face to my camera, Rockport Circle. That's all, that's all Lexington, and then the courts that are down, down Silverhorn also.
Right.
So there's another, there could be another fifteen hundred people in that, just that little bit we talked about.
Anything else you want me to do here? Or you want me to undo this?
A small group of three, four percent, which is good.
Yeah, I don't know, I, Sarah, what what do you think Morningside is more akin to Empire Ranch or Lexington? Because that's when you come in off of Golf Links.
Yeah, I think it's technically Empire Ranch.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. So that last piece, Doug, probably probably want to undo this one. If we were gonna grab anything, it would be that the Trowbridge Circle piece.
Okay.
That that makes sense as part of North Lexington, if you want to make that distinction.
Do we have to add that little lane too?
Does that get me in both sides of that street, Trowbridge or in one district?
Doesn't look like it.
It's true, bridge would be a dividing line at that point.
Yeah, all right, throw this one out.
Now you're losing, you're using Silver Silverhorn and moving over to Trowbridge.
Yeah.
That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, well, we tried residents inputs, you know. A bit respectful, and it's not working well.
And also, what's below that segment is Lexington Hills versus Empire Ranch slash Hillcrest, basically. So there's a, there's a segment that's kind of hanging out below it.
Yeah.
So when I was playing around on Dave's redistricting, I do have, I believe, Empire Ranch totally divided from Lexington Hills. But I guess, you know, it affects the rest of the districts is what happens. The only thing that's that would be included with in mind with Empire Oaks, just because of the way the the census block works is, you know, those little sixteen homes or whatever it is off of Silverhorn. You know what that resident I'm talking about lives there, Elaine, I don't want to say who it is, but just to identify the neighborhood.
Yes.
There's like two, two neighborhoods of eight or whatever, two cul-de-sacs.
Right.
I think that, I don't think that's technically Empire Ranch, but I don't know how to separate it just because of the way the census blocks go. So. I I guess my point is, there's a way to separate Empire Ranch from Lexington Hills if you want to do that, but it does affect the other districts.
You do have another hand up if you want to take additional comments.
Okay, I also wanted to comment, one of the residents talked about Esplanade being part of the Parkway. I wasn't aware of that, but I was kind of curious as to where that felt, Esplanade and Ravage and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. One thing, on number three, if we want to give some more to five, there is a Broadstone small community behind BJ's on the college side. That's not technically coming on Empire Ranch, is more of a Broadstone community.
With Scholar Way as the boundary?
Scholar and Cavett and Latherton Way.
Yeah, right there at the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's a good one to take out. It's not Lexington, for sure. David, Doug, on the Cavett, yep, you got it. Give it to whom? Five? Give it to five from three, yep. That's a good number. Five hundred and seventy-nine.
You're still legal.
Yeah. And and that one is not splitting any homes, you know, left side is one district, right side, it is not the case in that piece, I know.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Boundaries, yeah, there are no home, yeah, that's right.
It gives some room for three. Yeah, it looks neat.
You know, you you know what, now that you've got a little extra population in five, this actually gives you the opportunity to adjust along Oak Avenue also to maybe link Briggs Westerly and like the the south part of that easterly, if that makes any sense. So kind of, yeah, so if you if you go down a little bit, that there's like, there's, yeah, right there, a little lower. So there's kind of like a, there's a power line right along Oak Avenue Parkway right there, yeah. So the the area to the left of the street, so the west of Oak Avenue, we've had a number of maps where there was a bit of a dividing line right there. And what is it, Willow Creek Drive kind of acts as an east-west boundary perhaps? So you could actually get more of Briggs Ranch, which I would say is the area north of the power lines in District five into one, and some of more like Willow Creek, I guess, into District five from one. Does that make sense? Or into one from five.
One, this, this is the pork chop that we just put into one.
Yeah, I'm saying you could take, you could take the easterly boundary of the pork chop and move it east further. And then you could move below the power lines right there, you could actually move that boundary westerly to balance that. That's actually how we started out with this map, where no, the other way, other way, you'd be taking from five to give to one in that area.
Oh, other way, okay.
Yeah. So we started out with it, with that boundary moved further easterly. So you can grab some of that and move it into one. And then if you go down, you can move some of one into five. I don't know that there's a real natural edge right there, but it was kind of like, I want to say it was like that when we started with this map. But just for argument's sake, you could go all the way to Blue Ravine. And then that would get all of Briggs kind of interconnected.
Lot of people.
It's a lot, I know.
Nine seventeen hundred, nineteen hundred, twenty, two thousand, twenty-one.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot in that other quadrant, though. So if that flipped over, then you could work on the opposite quadrant and move it from one to five. I, listen, I'm prepared to fail every step here.
Well, I know, I I'm always taking inputs while we are doing this from the residents. If you guys are open, there is one hand raised, we can listen from that person.
Yeah, so that, that part right there, so the the kind of open space that's in the middle of that, that's Folsom Middle School right in, right in there. So if you were to work along Willow Creek and move that part over to five, I think we maybe get a, get back to pretty balanced. Yeah. Well, how much is that?
Twelve hundred. And you have two illegal districts.
How far off are we, though? I don't know what you're.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, one is it over by six, which, and then five is under by three.
Okay, we'll grab a little bit more of one then. Upper left, yeah. Maybe Tomatros then? Oh, God. Yeah, that's not.
Oh, you have two legal districts at this point.
I don't know. Anybody got an opinion this?
Let me show you something. Right here.
Yeah, it's a little testing compactness, eh?
Well, honestly, I think this just kind of underscores, it is more difficult to do this jigsaw puzzle, in my opinion, when you do, when you split South of Fifty.
Yeah.
Just throwing it out there.
But no, no people at this point on South of Fifty, so if you can take that into consideration, right? Right now we are considering zero people almost.
You're saying that we can't annoy them yet?
The, the thing we are, yeah, this is what country map is that?
I, I think that looks a little funky and I don't, I mean, it didn't even go all the way down Montrose, did it?
No.
So.
Well, we did, we went a little further than we needed to though. We didn't have to take that upper left-hand corner. It still was going to work without that. So if you, if you extract from that zone, the stuff that's above and to the left of Flower, yeah. I think that's still, that still is legal, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Not very compact.
Where's the compactness number?
I would have to find one.
Oh, okay.
And, and none of them are, in my opinion, very good. Dave's, Dave's has them right at your fingertips.
Yeah.
My program doesn't, doesn't have that.
Yeah. Well, listen, I think, at least as far as I'm concerned, we've got a third map now that works. I, you know, we could probably come up with six more and we had 18 of them to look at to start out with. So I think we probably need to call the question as to which one or two we're going to press ahead with. And I think where we started the day with the couple of changes that we made to it to you know, respond to some public comments, we're pretty good. I think this map's pretty good. I think the Klein map is pretty good. They're all going to fail for somebody for some reason.
Yeah.
We're to 20 people for some reason.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We still have one request to speak if you wanted to take comment.
Okay, please do.
Okay, your speaker will be Bob Holderness. Bob, go ahead and unmute yourself and I'll set your timer.
Yeah, just a short comment. I, I wanted to endorse the Chicago approach Mayor Mike mentioned earlier. I think it's a good thing to the extent you can to have shared neighborhoods, because remember, a lot of these neighborhoods are a product of builders and developers. I mean, Bill Parker did the Parkway, Harriet Elliott largely did Lexington Hills. But that's, that's not a significant reason to separate them. It's much better to go down the middle of the street and require some people in the Parkway to be in one district and some of the others not, you know, I, I'm not suggesting wholesale change. I have no changes to suggest. I'm just suggesting that the Chicago model has some wisdom behind it and I would encourage you to do that when it makes sense to do that. And again, I'm not asking you to change anything, just be mindful of that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have no other request to speak.
Any other questions or comments from council members? Thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion for anything?
Yeah, can we, can we take one more look at the slightly improved preferred map that we started the day with? Just to see it relative to that one that we were on.
Doug, is there a way we can put side by side, even though it's going to be a tiny?
Um, no.
Well, I think the, I think this map and the one that we were just working on might be too good candidates to put forward for the next meeting at one last show of public comments and then press ahead with one of them.
Agreed.
If we're going to put forward two maps for the next meeting, is there any desire to to choose one that splits off the 50 and one that does not?
Right now, Sarah, we get two maps that split it. And at the last meeting, we had three council members that wanted it split.
Yeah. Sarah, what would you, just hypothetically, what would you do? Would you take the west half and just put it back into District Three? Or would you take all of it and put it into Four? Because the, if you, if you just made District Three all of South of Fifty plus what we've got drawn there, there's virtually no population in that west part right now.
I, I would I would probably put it with three, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we can consider that as an option and still go ahead with two maps that show it's split currently, because making that change is a modest adjustment.
I, my, my fear about that is that I don't, I don't think that's going to be fully developed for another 15 years at least, but those numbers are going to look, they're going to be pretty lopsided probably five years from now.
Yeah.
And that's just with the development on the east side of South of the freeway.
Well, we, I mean, we've got meaningful development happening on the west half of this thing.
Yep.
So there's, I mean, we've approved a bunch of projects up and down East Bidwell right there, so.
Well, we've approved a bunch of projects, but those projects are not going to be built tomorrow.
Well, no, but one of them that has, you know, 500 houses in it is underway in earnest right now. So the, the one that's closest to the southern boundary, right along East Bidwell, the, the senior community.
That's, that was going to be my next question. Isn't that the age restricted one? So that's
Yeah.
Population is going to be less there because it's age restricted, so it's going to be one and two-person households.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It'll be, it'll be a little isolated and relatively small population-wise, but it won't be zero.
It won't be zero, but it's, it's not going to be more than about 750 people.
Yeah. Yeah, you're probably right. You are right.
If we want to propose, I know several times we heard from public that they want to keep Folsom South One. If we want to make that change, since we were drawing the previous one, we can go ahead and merge that one.
We're, we're talking about moving forward with, with two maps, right?
Yeah.
That was my suggestion. So we, you know, we can pick either one of them and make South Fifty singular with District Three. And I'm fine if it's this one, it doesn't matter to me that much.
Can we, can we close this one and then Doug, can you save this one and then Doug, can you call up the one that we just worked on?
Right.
So we can see it. I know we can't see them both at the same time, but.
Good part is Doug doesn't have to worry about the numbers when you split or add South of Fifty, zero.
He doesn't have to worry about it anyway. It does it automatically for him. Not like Doug's counting on his toes and fingers here.
And I'm, I'm agnostic, but it does not matter to me where.
You can give four to three, South of Fifty. So it's four, target three.
Talk about bizarre census tracts.
Yeah, no kidding. They follow all the creeks.
There's 27 people in this, in this area.
Oh.
We'll get closer, we'll get closer with both.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, my, my suggestion or motion, if you're going to take one, is that we put these two maps forward, this one and the one we were just looking at forward as a final opportunity for public input at our next meeting and then we choose one and adopt it.
I am, at this point, I'm going to tell you that you need to designate which districts get to let go in which election years so that you can post that and people will have that to look at before you make your final vote in one week.
Okay, well.
So you, you should designate which districts go in which years.
So we were, we were, at the last meeting, we talked about 2022 being for the odd numbers districts. Is there anybody that wants to change that?
I think that, that works best for the other map, but I would, I would suggest that for this map, two, five and three. Or we renumber these slightly so that one, three and five are what are currently shown as two. Just change one to two, basically. If you can change the designation.
You can change district numbers if you want.
That's what I'm suggesting. Change one to two and two to one. And then the one, three, five works for either map.
What's? I'm confused. I, I thought we were pretty much kind of the same thing now.
They're not. The numbers are slightly different because we've kind of squeezed the balloon so hard.
Madam Mayor, you do have a hand raised for public comment if you're still ready.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. So raising their hand is Sharon Kendall. So Sharon, go ahead and I'll set your timer. Sharon, you'll need to unmute yourself.
There we go. Just wanted to say that since we've gone from eighteen diagrams to three, I think that it is certainly prudent to allow more public comment to allow discussion of the three versus just two. You know, that the timing of the special meetings doesn't allow for people to automatically take off work to come to these meetings. And there was a lot of information, good information that was brought up today. And I think that it really, we want to hear more from the voice of the people. I think that everyone here has demonstrated, you know, some really great ideas. But, you know, there's not that much difference between two and three. So let's let the people speak more to the three plans than just two.
I, I don't know what the third plan is that she's referring to, but I think we have two that work. That's what I was, that's what I was suggesting we push forward.
And honestly, and if anybody, I would, if we're going to move forward with the two maps, I'm, I'm not sure what Sharon's referring to with the third map either, but and Sharon, I just want you to understand that part of the difficulty, if, if your comment was really intended to say that we should be having these meetings at night, the difficulty was Dwight was not Dwight, I keep wanting to call you Dwight Yoakam like.
That's okay.
Doug was not available for an evening meeting. That's what we tried to do initially. So this was not intended, it wasn't intended to exclude anybody from discussion.
Yeah, I understand that. It's just that I think that we should allow the people to speak more. And I was talking about keeping Bruce Klein's plan in as well.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to move forward with these two maps and continue the discussion about the, the numbering of the zoning and because we did have somebody request, I think it was Bruce Klein, requested to be able to talk about that. It was either Bruce or Robert. And I, I think that's, you know, we'll, we'll figure out what the numbers of the various locations need to be and then finish the discussion of the sequencing next Tuesday night. Is everybody okay with that?
Mr. Wong, is it appropriate to, to not deal with the sequencing today? Can that piece wait for final decision or final association with each map for February 22nd?
The, the council had previously tentatively identified districts one, three and five for 2022 and two and four for 2024, but the mayor is absolutely correct. She, the council has this question to further discuss and make a final decision next week. And that is okay. But what I hear Doug is trying to gather is to provide an advanced read to the public so they can comment on that as well.
I think that, um, thank you very much, Steve. I would just, listen, my motion is to take these two maps forward, not the Klein map in this instance, but this map swapped the designation of one for two and two for one so that the recommendation can be for the public to consider districts one, three and five in each of the maps for 2022 and two and four for 2024.
For clarity purposes, I think is what you're saying, Councilman Rikosowski.
Yes.
This map that is on the screen right now has to have two and one switched.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's Mike, that's Mike's motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
And Madam Mayor may just clarify, the motion is to further continue public hearing number four to next Tuesday night, February 22nd.
And to change one and two on the map that we're looking at.
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct, Steve. That was my motion.
Thank you, sir.
Can, can I ask a question then? So I, I understand the part about continuing hearing number four next Tuesday night, the 22nd, but in terms of if we put, if we vote to put these two maps forward, does that mean we can still make changes next week or no?
No, no.
You have to select one final map next week.
Okay.
And you couldn't make any adjustments to it.
That doesn't, right, that's not answering Sarah's question. If we're moving forward with two maps, why would we not be able to make a tweak on one of those two maps next week?
I'm sorry, let me say that again. You, you, if you change it next week, you can do this and look at two maps and then have a, have a vote on one of them next week, but you can also throw them both out, make a change, but you will have to have another hearing after that. Before you can vote on a final map, according to the Fair Maps Act, you must have that map on display for seven days.
Okay, so it's going to have to be one or the other at the next meeting. Okay, everybody understand that?
Or you have another hearing, okay.
And which is going to put us past the deadline according to what Steve Wong told us.
I understand. It's just, I mean, because these things are so dang small, it's, you know, it's nice to be able to blow everything up and look and see where the actual boundaries are.
Yep, and, and that would be my next request. I know I made the request for us to get hard copies of the, of the large maps in advance of the previous meeting and I'd like to make that request again. So can we please have those in our agenda packages when they, when they come out this?
Yes, we can again provide large copies of each of the two maps for you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we have, we have a motion, do we have, and do we have a second?
I, I, I seconded it.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just a comment, just for clarification, next Tuesday, next meeting, we are not in, we're not planning to make any changes to this.
We're, we have to pick one of the two maps at the next meeting in order to meet the deadline. If we were to tweak either of the two maps at the next meeting, then we'd have to have it available for public review for another seven days, and according to what our city attorney is telling us, that puts us past the bed, the deadline.
Right.
Okay?
No, I, I'm, I'm clear on that now, and I want to make sure public, and just now somebody, you know, Karen spoke, and they want to comment again, and I am very well aware, like, we have given quite a bit of time for residents to go through.
Okay, okay. If there's no other questions, then we'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Zikino?
No.
Chalamchera?
Mine is going to be no. I want to make sure how much time we have, at least a week after that, we can finalize it, seven days, so that's why I'm putting my, what is no.
Rodriguez? Yes, Kozlowski?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
So the motion is approved.
Okay, um, we don't actually have it on here because it's a special meeting, so I guess we, we're not necessarily anticipating council comments or city manager report because it's a special meeting only about this subject.
Correct.
In which case, we are meeting next Tuesday evening back at our normal meeting time, and.
If I could add that that meeting will not be on the Zoom format, you will be returned to in-person in the council chambers.
Yay. I can't wait to see you all in actual person. Okay, thank you all, thank you to the public, and with that, we are adjourned at, according to my watch, three twenty.
Thank you, everyone. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you.